Good evening. It's Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016, 5:00 PM. This is the Fairmont Area School Board meeting. Our attendance, our roll call here tonight. Our President Nicole Green is absent, so that's why I'm chairing the meeting. Our other members are present, as is our soon-to-be sworn-in member. Please join me now for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time Superintendent Brown will swear in our new member of the board.
It's my pleasure tonight to have the oath of office be given to our new school board member Dell Ellis. Dell, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dell Ellis.
I, Dell Ellis.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member.
And I will discharge faithfully the office of school board member.
Of Independent School District 2752.
Of Independent School District 2752.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome Dell. And we'll move to item four, which is the minutes. We had two board meetings since we last met, the regular meeting of August 9th and the special meeting of August 12th to canvass the special election results. I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I so move.
Is there a second?
I go.
I have a motion by Julie, seconded by Rufus, to approve the school board meeting minutes of August 9th and August 12th. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have our agenda. You should all have a green packet that has a few revisions with some extra personnel Is there, are there any further additions or changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Dell and a second by Danielle to approve the agenda as offered. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We have no celebrations in school and community reports tonight, so we'll move on to Superintendent Brown and the superintendent's report and calendar.
Thank you, Dan. Just a couple of notes that upcoming, fill out your school board calendar, the pink sheet. On Monday, August 29th is our back-to-school opening session that will be held at the high school at the Performing Arts Center. Breakfast will be served from 7:00, 7:15 to 8:00, and then 8:00 we'll start the meeting. That will go, we'll be serving dinner at Cardinal, at Gomcruh Park at the Cardinal Night Out Staff Picnic. That'll be from 5:00 to 6:30. It's a great time. We invite all of our staff and their families to come to that picnic. It's been an annual event for a number of years. It's always a fun time to get to see the old guard coming back and the new teachers and new staff that are coming to our system. Just a couple of comments. First of all, on Saturday, Robin and I attended the Martin County Fair and we picked up a $10,000 check from the Martin County Foundation, and that will be used for additional equipment for our Agriculture Academy Greenhouse. And we really want to thank that, and later on tonight, the board will accept that $10,000 donation. Also, last week, Bob Bonin and I had a wonderful visit with Kyle Zerkey. Kyle is the Vice President of Zerkey Built Manufacturing, and they are in the process of relocating their manufacturing plant from Winnebago, Minnesota to Fairmont. They have 35 jobs, they will be growing up to, they will be, eventually have 70 full-time employees. And we're working with Kyle to provide additional welders. In fact, Kyle called Bob yesterday and asked for the names of four of our recent high school graduates that have good welding skills, because he needs four additional workers right now. And just a wonderful relationship that we have with business, manufacturing community, and our high school, so we really do appreciate that. That's all I have.
Your words are powerful, Joe. They're causing thunder to come down from the heavens.
[laughing].
Thanks. We'll move on to eight financial business, and we have a couple of donations. I'm the resolution guy, so I'll introduce this resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas, $2,000 was donated by the Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention for the Elementary New Health Curriculum, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by the Chair and a second by Julie. Any discussion? We have a roll call vote for resolutions. Dell?
Yes.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Motion, resolution is approved. Thank you. And likewise, in your Appendix B, I will introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas, $3,396.70 was donated by Services for Challenging Youth for the Elementary New Health Curriculum, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift. Do we have a second?
Second.
Danielle, I think you got in there. Motion by the Chair and seconded by Danielle. Any discussion? Roll call vote once again. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
And Rufus?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Thank you. And thanks to those groups. Joe, what is the new health curriculum? Do you have some background on that?
Actually, Mr. Davidson will be able to comment on that in just a minute, because he's here representing the elementary.
All right. We'll get to Jim in just a moment, but first, we have Sue here to look over our financial reports and bills.
Tonight on the agenda, we have the wires and transfers from August 5th through August 18th, and the payment of the August 23rd bills. And so the wires and transfers from that August 5th to 18th, there's just one during that period of time, and that is our RevTrack fees from the prior month's transactions. Then moving to the check register, you do have two check registers. They're both dated today, August 23rd. The one that starts out Fairmont True Value, that is for the 15-16 school year, and the one that starts out Select Cooperative, and this is for a registration workshop for staff development for a high school staff member. Do you have any questions on that register? Okay, then moving to the other register, I have a few to bring to your attention. Check number 58-819 made out to MEI Total Elevator Solutions. This is our bi-monthly elevator inspection that we have at both sites, different activities that we pay every year. And then check number 58-824 made out to Music Theater International. This is our deposit for the Fall Musical. The musical will be The Little Mermaid, and the dates are November 9th through the 12th. Check number 58-836 made out to the South Central Service Cooperative. We purchased a truckload of papers, that's 840 cases of paper, for this upcoming school year. It's $22.40 a case, and so we purchased that, it's stored at the maintenance shop, and then sent out to the buildings as they have room to store it in, as they need it. Do you have any questions on that register? Julie and I did review the payments and the wire transfers prior to the board meeting.
Yep. If there are no questions, I then will make a motion to approve the wire transfers for August 5th, 2016, and August 18th, 2016, and payment of the August 23rd, 2016 bills.
Second.
We have a motion by Julie and a second by Dell to approve the wire transfers for August 5th through August 18th and the payment of the August 23rd bills. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, being done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Being that we have no old business, we'll move on to our new business. And in Appendix C, we have the Family Handbook for Fairmont Elementary for 2016 and 17. And we welcome Elementary Principal, grades 3 through 6 Principal Jim Davidson, who will share what's new with that. Hello?
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I'll explain a little bit about the health curriculum. Last year, it was asked by the high school, junior high, if we would look into doing a health curriculum, substance prevention curriculum. And what we did was Haley Lortz, and Derek Spear, and myself spent quite a bit of time taking a look and seeing exactly how we can maintain our current FTEs that we have and still be able to teach the health curriculum within the structure of the FIED program. So they did research on it and came up with two programs that are integrated within the structure of FIED programs. They're still very content-heavy, but they're oriented toward not just a 5th and 6th grade scenario, but they're oriented from a kindergarten level all the way up through 6th grade. And as we all know, that's the best way to teach it, step by step, dealing with nutrition, dealing with healthcare, dealing with safety issues. It's an entire curriculum. What we also knew was a lot of money, because curriculums don't come cheap. And so when I went to FSAP and talked to Dennis Lockwood and Steph Johnson, they suggested that I look at asking them formally for proposals, since this is the last year of their organization. Hopefully, it'll be continued with a new grant. And they were wonderful about it, and Dennis Lockwood went to bat. He really went to bat with it, and FSAP could only fund a portion of it, so he went to Services for Challenging Youth and asked different groups, and they came up with the total amount we needed, and I'm incredibly grateful to them for doing that. It's going to be a great program. I'm looking forward to it. We're ordering it right away. In fact, I talked to the two FIED teachers today, and ordering it, and making sure we're going to go unit by unit, and they're going to spend time structuring it and restructuring it to make sure that it meets the needs of our kids. Any other questions on that? All right. Family Handbook. In front of you, you have a copy of the 2016-2017 Family Handbook, and I'm happy to see there's no real changes in it from one year, from last year to this year. If you remember, we spent some time looking this over and compiling a whole bunch of information. Our Family Handbook not only contains discipline, but also includes our process and procedures that we follow. It's kind of a one-stop shopping for parents. And so that being said, we put it all together. Diane Gerhart helped us a great deal putting it together, and I want to just touch on a couple of things as we go through. First of all, to begin with, Fairmont Elementary, and this is on the second page, you can follow along with that, and Fairmont Elementary School, we are beginning the path toward Positive Behavior Intervention and Support School. What that means is we are recognizing students for doing good things in our building, and we're recognizing that there are kids that need extra instruction and extra help. And we're also recognizing that all the processes and procedures that we have, not only are they important for kids to follow, but we need to make sure that as adults, we follow them as well. And that means training kids during the first one to two weeks of school, and making sure that little things that sound little to the general public, which are quite large for an elementary school, such as walking down the hallway, such as how do you behave in the cafeteria? What do you do when you're outside with recess? All those important things, we are standardizing. We have them pretty well standardized for K through E through 2, and for 3 through 6. But on the 31st, our P-Biz team, which is made up of our teachers and social workers, are going to be presenting a new proposal and the first steps that we take toward re-energizing and reorganizing our P-Biz committee. We're excited about it. We've already met once, have them represented from every single grade level, every specialty area, and we're actually going to be dividing up the staff and taking them from a journey. Cafeteria, this is what it needs to look like in the cafeteria. This is what it looks like in the hallway. Called a Minnesota motor bus, they're very excited. They're going to come and bring four buses for us, two for the primary and two for us. And the very first day, actually only 20 minutes into the school day, we'll have our first groups of children go on there and listen to the bus company talking about why these rules are important and why we need to follow up with them. So it gives a little bit of a short synopsis on how this particular policy is in action. Now, that being said, the second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is page four, our attendance policy. What's interesting about our attendance policy, and I don't think it's a lot different than a lot of other elementary attendance policies, we follow the state statutes. We know that after three unexcused absences, that child is considered potentially truant, and after seven, they are truant. And we follow them, and we have our social workers work closely with the families to make sure that we can help families, that's our overall goal, help families make sure the kids attend school. And that's the bottom line with it. Now, if you take a look at our statistics based on, we have 95%. Now, you said 95%. Well, that's really good. You have 95% of your kids attending. That sounds like a really good thing. But today, Joe and I were talking about it, and I know statistics, and I really like statistics. I really do. So I did some digging and found out, and this is entitled Chronic Elementary Absenteeism: A Problem Hidden in Plain Sight by, it's a research brief from the Attendance Works and Child and Family Policy Center. It kind of set me back a little bit, because I want to read a little portion of this. While many educators assume that a 95% ADA, excuse me, rate is a good indicator, good attendance, a research found that it's often not the case. We found that schools with average daily attendance of higher than 97% rarely have a problem with chronic absence. However, schools that have an ADA between 93 and 97, that is us, also need to analyze their data to determine whether chronic absence is a significant problem. And interestingly enough, if you take a look at the statistics with that, and I'll take a school of 400, we're a little bit more than that, we're about 500, but a school of 500 with a 95% average, you could have 30% of our population missing nearly a month of school and still get 95%. So, Joe gave us a list of kids who are absent in our building. I'm speaking of E through 6. And we took a look at it, and I did that today a little bit with my social worker she was in today. And what we're planning on doing is doing an in-depth look. Now, our social workers know those families, and we know them well. But the issue that they talk about is not only knowing them well, but how do you convince them that it's so important to make sure they get their kids to school without having to go to court? Court does one thing, and that says, you're going to bring your kids to school. It doesn't necessarily assure us that kids are going to come willing and able and want to learn. So our focus is to make sure that we bring families in and work with families so they can understand the value of attending and making sure that your kids go to school. So, interesting, very interesting research. Joe has a copy of it, and I told Joe today, I think that's a very good goal for our school to have for this year, in particular for me. I'm very interested in it, and I want to move forward on it to see exactly what that does mean for Fairmont Elementary School. The rest of our policy includes things that are common in discipline policies. It includes things such as, you can look through at your leisure, our bullying policy, bus behavior information, what happens if kids damage property, harassment, hazing. We don't have a lot of hazing, not any hazing at all in elementary schools. But, and then the possible consequences of such. We want to make sure that our school is a wonderful place for kids to go, and we want to make sure that our kids show up, because statistics will show that if they stay at home, they're not going to learn anything. So we want everybody there. This policy is a great improvement over what we've had in the prior years. I want to thank Diane for helping us with this, and I'm looking forward to digging in more with our P-Biz committee this year, developing our school further, and making sure that we are very positive and very oriented toward helping families make sure their kids learn. Any questions to the board? Thank you.
Thanks very much, Jim. So we have a, we need a motion to approve or disapprove the 2016-17 Family Handbook for Fairmont Elementary School. Do we have any?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Julie and a second by Dell. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. In new business to be, truth and taxation hearing, Julie.
Yes, there's a recommendation that annually, we do have to have a truth and taxation meeting, and that's going to be scheduled on Tuesday, December 13th, which is our regular scheduled meeting for that night. And by law, the hearing cannot begin until after 6:00 PM. So we'll probably meet first, have our meeting, and then conclude with that, and then whenever we're done with our meeting, then we can do the truth and taxation, except for it cannot start till 6:00. So I'll make that motion to approve scheduling a truth and taxation hearing for Tuesday, December 13th, after 6:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Julie, seconded by Rufus, to approve scheduling the truth and taxation hearing for our regular meeting night, Tuesday, December 13th, 2016, beginning after 6:00 PM. Do we have any, excuse me, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. In new business 10C, change in adult meal prices. Danielle?
Yes, we talked at our operations meeting. In order to meet the required minimum price mandates set by the USDA, it's necessary for us to increase our adult breakfast price from 165 to 175. The current price of 360 for an adult lunch does not meet the minimum mandate. So no, or does meet the minimum mandate, so we don't need an increase on lunch. So I make a motion to approve raising the adult breakfast price for 2016-17 from 165 to 175.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion by Danielle, seconded by Julie, to approve increasing adult breakfast price for 2016 by 10 cents. And again, this was basically, I think, a mandate that was brought forward by the state, was it not?
And I think last year, we had, was it 30 adult breakfasts?
It was not very many.
It was not very many.
Yeah. Well, anybody that wants to come by and eat breakfast in the morning is more than welcome to. It'll cost $1.75 if we approve this, so we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to new business under Section D, School Board Committee Assignments. Rufus?
With Dell joining the school board, apparently some discussion with the President, Nicole Green was done, and it was decided to plug Dell into Staff Welfare and Policy and Curriculum, replacing Julie and Danielle. So I would make a motion to approve the appointment of Dell Ellis to serve on Staff Welfare Committee and Policy Curriculum Committee, replacing Julie Lowey and Danielle Schutz, respectively.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Rufus, seconded by Danielle, to approve appointing Dell to the Staff Welfare Committee and Policy Curriculum Committees. I guess I would point out that this is for the remainder of this particular year, and then when we get to the new year, the first meeting of 2017, we'll have the swearing-in of the board members that win this November's election, and at that time, we redo all committee assignments at that time. So basically, I guess this is actually the committees that Diane had served on, and then Julie and Danielle had been filling in until Dell joins us. So, any further discussion? Go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up in new business under Section E, these are resolutions that we will have to When it comes to cooperative sponsorship of Minnesota State High School League activities, what we have here is a school that wants to join our soccer cooperative sponsorship agreement. What we have to do in that case is to dissolve the current agreement that we have and then approve the new agreement. And what we have here under new business Section E, first of all, I'll introduce this resolution and move for its adoption.
We have to dissolve first.
Yeah, dissolve first.
Okay, this is...
That's number one, is here's dissolve, and then your resolution is number two.
Okay, so that's in the green back here. First of all, I would make a motion to approve dissolving the current sponsorship agreement for girls' soccer effective with the 2016-17 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Rufus? Any discussion? Okay, and for this, we do a voice vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and now, the resolution to approve the new cooperative sponsorship agreement. I'll introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas, a proposed agreement has been negotiated and drafted regarding the cooperative sponsorship of a joint high school girls' soccer program, whereas a copy of the proposed draft is attached and incorporated by reference. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 2752 as follows. The attached cooperative sponsorship agreement be and hereby is approved, that the chairman and clerk are hereby authorized to execute the attached cooperative sponsorship agreement and to make the required application to the Board of Directors of Minnesota State High School League, and that this resolution shall be effective only upon the adoption of a similar resolution by governing board or school board of cooperating school and school districts. And the girls' soccer co-op would add Jackson County Central Schools in addition to the previous agreement, which was Fairmont Grenade Huntley's Chain, Martin Luther Truman, and then now adding Jackson County Central. Do we have a second on the resolution? Motion by the Chair, seconded by Rufus, to approve the resolution. Do we have any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Resolution is passed and adopted. And likewise, with the boys, I will make a motion to approve dissolving the current cooperative sponsorship agreement for boys' soccer effective with the 2016-17 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Who's second?
Rufus, seconded. And do we have any further discussion on that? All in favor of dissolving the current cooperative sponsorship agreements? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption as appearing in Appendix E with the same language, so I don't have to repeat that whole thing, all the whereases, and now therefore be it resolved. Likewise, it would be Fairmont Grenade Huntley's Chain, Martin Luther Truman, and Jackson County Central. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by the Chair and seconded by Dell. Actually, when I spoke with Matt Nielsen last night at the Athletic Council, actually, we have two girls from Jackson who will be playing, but no boys, but we will go ahead and approve the cooperative sponsorship agreement for anyone who's interested in the future to come over and play soccer in Fairmont. So, we need a roll call vote again. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
And Rufus?
Aye.
Resolution is duly passed and adopted. Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, and under F, we have excess levy referendum. Superintendent Brown?
Thanks, Dan. Tonight, I'm asking the school board to approve a resolution that will ask our voters during the November 8th general election of this year to renew our current operating levy. If you can recall, four years ago, the school board asked the community to increase our operating levy from $500 per pupil community to increase our operating levy from $500 per pupil to $950 per pupil. And the whole goal there was to make sure that if we had that pass, which we did on a two to one margin, that we would maintain all of our current programs and also live within our means and balance our budget. And we've done all three of those things that we promised to do four years ago. Our operating levy is not actually, it doesn't actually go away until another full year. However, we feel this is a great time to go out for the voters because it's a general election, there are more people that vote, and that it doesn't cost us anything to go out for an election. If we wait for another year, we'd have to pay for a special election. And so, the legislature, just one other little change here. The legislature, a few years ago, they changed the weighting of how much an elementary and a secondary student was worth. And so, the weighting, they changed the weighting so that every child K through six is worth 1.0, and a student in grade seven through 12 is worth 1.2. And so when they did that, our operating levy, instead of being $950 per student, became $1,013 per student, or $1,014 per student. And it's $1,013.14 per student. It's the same, it generates the same amount of revenue. And so, even though it looks like it's a different amount, the amount of money that we generate for our school is the same as we passed four years ago. So what the resolution is asking our voters to do this year is simply to renew the current property tax levy that goes for our schools. So it does not represent a tax increase at all. The other thing that it does is that we're asking the voters to approve this for 10 years. The last time we went out, we did it for five. All the other schools around us have 10-year levies, and we feel it's important to do that for continuity. Finally, in a sheet that we made available, we are the lowest operating levy taxed school district in the county. We're at $1,013 per student. Martin County West is at $1,423 per student. United South Central in Wells, in a different county, is 1,466. Truman is $2,912 per student. And Grenada Huntley East Chain is $3,052 per student. So we will still be the lowest taxed district for an operating levy in the entire county. And I feel very good about that. And I feel like that's enough, and we'll be able to survive. I'll be glad to yield any questions. Otherwise, I'm going to ask the school board to pass the resolution to call for an election this November.
When it comes to our enrollment figures, they appear to be steady for the foreseeable future?
You know, the census data, of course, only goes out five years, because if you're not born yet, you're not born. But our census data shows that our census, it shows that our enrollment's going to be steady. You know, we've been averaging approximately 1,700 students for each of the last six years. Sometimes it goes up to 1725, sometimes it comes down to 1680. But we actually get paid for approximately 1,700 students throughout the year. Students come and go. And so, we're very fortunate that we're very stable. Our most recent enrollment data that we have, it looks like we're very close to those same numbers. Students are still registering. Even today, we had some new students show up to the high school and at the elementary. And at the next school board meeting, I'll give the school board an updated report on who's actually attending our school. But we look very solid. I mean, we're just very fortunate that we have steady enrollment.
And I just want to point out that this is the operating levy, this is, which is different than the bond, which we use, the bond referendums, that is for the buildings we need to, you know, maintain or to make any changes to our buildings. But this is operating levy, so this is what pays our staff, educates our students, provides the busing, you know, actually helps us make our men's, or make our ends meet. So, just so that everybody's aware of the difference. And this is, and we'll go into more detail in as we go, but like, like Superintendent Brown said, that there is, you know, this is exactly what we passed four years ago, and that we are just going to ask our voters to approve that we remain the same with our tax base there.
And Julie, we talked about that in the committee meeting, that this really locks in, it's really an advantage for the taxpayers to lock in this rate for 10 years, so that there isn't an increase. And so, I think that's important to do. And also, you pointed out, the operating levy is unique, and that farmland is not taxed.
Correct.
If you have, if you have a farmstead, you only pay the operating levy on the house, the garage, and one acre. You do not pay it on the farmland itself.
Do we have any further discussion, Rufus? Dell, Danielle? If not, I would like to introduce a resolution to renew the student learning levy that was approved in 2012 and is set to expire in 2017. Is that the way we would need to put it in the record, then?
That's fine, yeah. We have a second and a roll call.
Yeah, we'll ask for a second?
Second.
So, resolution made by the chair, seconded by Rufus, to ask for renewal of the operating levy at the regular election to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2016. Do we have any further discussion?
I think it bears pointing out that you said it, but we are the lowest in our area, and significantly lower in some instances. And this would in fact hold us to that level for the next 10 years. So that, I think, bears reiteration.
That's important. In fact, the actual ballot will read as follows. Passage of this referendum extends an existing operating referendum at the same amount per pupil as in the previous year. So it makes it very clear, this is not a tax increase. It simply is the same rate that we had, that we currently have right now. Thank you, Dell.
And Joe, what is the approximate amount of money that's generated by that every year? Do you have that off the top of your head, or?
Not off the top of my head, but in my notes, I do. The amount that it actually generates is a total of $2,159,264. Now, of that, I should point out that we get state aid for part of that. We get, the state of Minnesota pays $562,591 of that. The local levy and equity revenue picks up the rest. So about a fourth of the total levy is actually paid for out of the state legislative appropriation.
And it's, it's kept us from having to deal with any staff cuts or program cuts. And in fact, we've been able to even build a little bit upon what we had going back into 2010, 2011 and that.
Right. We've been able to keep all of our academic programs. We've been able to keep our fine arts programs, our athletic activity programs. And, and part of that too is the fact, you know, when I came here six years ago, if you can recall, we were using five buildings. And now, we're only using two. And that also has provided us the ability to live within our means. And that's why we don't need a tax increase. That's why we can continue operating as we are with simply a renewal.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to ask for renewal at the, at the regular election on November 8, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Resolution.
It's a resolution.
Oh, it is a resolution?
Yep.
Oh.
It's in, it's in your packet.
That's okay.
Beg your pardon, we will go by Appendix F here. Okay, so, I will introduce the resolution determining the necessity of renewing an expiring voter-approved referendum revenue authorization and calling an election and referendum thereon. Okay, and voice, or excuse me, roll call vote. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Okay, sorry about the, sure, give me all the hard ones here. When, when the president gets back, she'll, she'll hear about that. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to new business G. Hockey agreement. Danielle?
Yeah, we actually have two. It's for hockey and soccer. On October 27 of 2015, the board approved a three-year funding proposal for high school hockey and soccer for school years 2016-17, 2017-18, and 2018-19. And we have the final agreements are enclosed in your packet, which basically, it kind of goes through, again, to refresh. So this year, we will be providing $10,000 in funding towards hockey and soccer. The second year, next year, will be $15,000, and then that third year will be $20,000 to both programs. And then, after that, it's fully funded. We'll fully fund both sports. So, both of the agreements are in your packet. It's just kind of a refresher of what we had last year. So I make a motion to approve the agreement between Fairmont Area Schools and Fairmont Youth Hockey Program.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Danielle, seconded by Julie. Point out, in the hockey agreement, it does state that the school district will not be financially responsible for any costs or for repairs, maintenance, operations, upgrades, and insurance for facilities or equipment not owned or under the control of the district. That includes, but is not limited to the ice arena, Zamboni equipment, et cetera. These sports have been self-funded for a long time, and we've had these agreements. We just had a couple little pieces of, of language to, to get finalized, I think. And that's what this will do then. Any further discussion on G? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And similarly, in Appendix H, we have the soccer agreement. Danielle?
Yep, I make a motion to approve the agreement between Fairmont Area Schools and Fairmont Soccer Association.
Second.
A motion by Danielle, seconded by Dell, to approve the agreement between Fairmont Area Schools and Fairmont Soccer Association, as in Appendix H. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now to school nutrition programs joint agreement in Appendix H1. Julie?
Yes, starting last May, Sue Nelson and Jacqueline LaMay, our food service director, started working with St. Paul Lutheran Schools to discuss providing student meals at the school for this upcoming school year 2016-17. Talks continued through the summer and concluded with a meeting with Brian Kubey, the new principal for St. Paul Lutheran. And so, how it's going to be written is that St. Paul Lutheran will be considered a site, same as Fairmont Elementary and the junior, senior high school. Meals will be prepared at the high school and transported to St. Paul's, where we will provide food service worker, provide, to serve the meals and clean up the kitchen. Meals will be submitted for reimbursement, along with meals from other sites. And in your packet is a copy of the agreement as it is presented. And so then, I would make a motion to approve entering into a joint agreement whereby Fairmont Area Schools will provide meals to students attending St. Paul Lutheran School.
Second. We have a motion by Julie, seconded by Dell, to approve entering into a joint agreement with meals for students attending St. Paul Lutheran School. In the past, they've had their own employee that has, that has done this for many years. She is retiring. She was a full-time worker, so this necessitated kind of a new agreement here. Do we have any further discussion?
I just want to point out that the lunch prices and for the students and the adults for St. Paul were set by the St. Paul Board. And those are included in the packet here. Those are not set by us. They were set by their board.
So, so our provider, Chartwells, will be designating the employee to go and, and deliver the meals and do the cleanup and such.
The Fairmont Area School Food Service Program will do that.
Okay.
Yep, very good.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We go to J. And in J, this is what Joe referenced in his superintendent's report. Fairmont Area Schools, the recipient of a $10,000 grant from Martin County Area Foundation with dollars specifically targeted to purchase equipment for the greenhouse, to entertain a motion to approve that grant.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Julie, seconded by Rufus, to approve accepting the $10,000 grant from Martin County Area Foundation for the new greenhouse equipment. Do we have any further discussion? Other than to say a big thank you to Martin County Area Foundation for generous support. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business K. Danielle?
Yes, the operations committee is recommending that Fairmont High School organize a dance team under the rules of the Minnesota State High School League effective for the 2016-17 school year. This request is being approved on the condition that the dance team will be self-funded for at least the first three years of operation. After that time, the board will review the success of the dance team and the funding status. So I make a motion to approve of the high school dance team effective for 2016-17 school year, under the condition that the team will be self-funded for at least the first three years of operation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Danielle, seconded by Julie, to approve a high school dance team effective for the 2016-17 school year, under the condition that the team will be self-funded for at least the first three years of operation. This has been brought to the operations committee for, well, the first time would have been about, what, six months ago, maybe? Where we have interested parties in, in doing this. And we've had a little bit of discussion added at previous meetings. But the program would be self-funded, much like the trap shooting club is right now. Do we have any others that are self-funded?
Well, it's kind of how hockey and soccer started as well. You know, it was kind of as, you know, and just to kind of just test the waters, to see the interests, see what, you know, what is, you know, going to involve into. And so, it's just kind of following that same practice that we've had in the past.
And as far as the, the amount of money that will be necessary to get this program launched, we've already seen donations from the community that are being accepted by the folks who are also helping to put the program together. So with the good momentum and, and crunching the numbers, this first year, they plan on doing three or four, three regular season meets and a section meet, is what they're planning on, on attending. And it would be during winter sports time. Girls who'd be in dance would have to be just in that one activity. They couldn't be in basketball and dance. That would be one of the things. But it is a, it's growing in popularity, and we have a lot of interest in it here, so.
Well, and at this current time, we're not looking at possibly having girls cheerleading through the wintertime either. So it'd give those girls another opportunity to share their talents.
Yeah, we, we do have fall cheerleading for football that's going to be taking place. But some of the money that would be, have gone to a winter cheerleader advisor, will actually be going to this dance team position as well. And there will be some time donated as well by some people. So, do we have any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to Fairmont Dance Team.
Dan, I just want to clarify something. Initially, the, the dance team will be totally self-funded. We're just not going to pay, the district won't pay any district dollars for the first three years. So even though there may be some savings from cheerleading, those dollars will not be used to spend on cheerleading, or dance.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The, but yes, when it comes to like the uniforms and the, and, and all of that, that is money that'll be raised by the, by the participants. So, yep.
Okay.
Okay, we move on to employment personnel. Rufus?
Okay, we have a long...
Okay, we have a long list of employment issues to deal with. The first is the roster of coaches for fall sports, provided by Matt Mahoney and attachment included. So I would make a motion to approve the employment of the coaches for fall sports as outlined in the attachment for the 2016-17 school year.
I'll second it. Motion and a second to approve the fall sports coaches as listed in Appendix 1. And it looks like we have nine new coaches, assistant and junior high coaches, and one new varsity coach for boys soccer. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the list of fall coaches?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, second. Jim Davidson and Michelle Rosen are recommending that Wendy Nemmers be hired as a kindergarten instructional aide effective September 6, 2016. Wendy worked as a paralegal in St. Paul before moving to Fairmont. She has gained valuable experience with children serving as an active volunteer in our schools. I therefore make a motion to approve the employment of Wendy Nemmers as a Title I Instructional Aide at a salary of Step 1 effective September 6, 2016.
Second.
A motion by Rufus, seconded by Dell, to approve the employment of Wendy Nemmers as a Title I Instructional Aide effective September 6th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Jim Davidson and Michelle Rosen are recommending that Ashley Alvin be hired as an intervention aid at Fairmont Elementary. She is a Fairmont grad and has completed two years of post-secondary education at St. Cloud State University. Therefore, make a motion to improve the employment of Ashley Alvin as an intervention aid at a salary of Step 1 effective September 6, 2016.
Second.
A motion by Rufus and seconded by Danielle to approve the employment of Ashley Alvin as intervention aide effective September 6th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Jim Davidson and Michelle Rosen are recommending that Lisa Doro be hired as a Title I Aide at Fairmont Elementary. Lisa is a Fairmont High School graduate and a graduate of SDSU. She is the owner of a local business, the shop downtown. I would like to make a motion to approve the employment of Lisa Doro as Title I Instructional Aide at a salary of Step 1 effective September 6, 2016.
I'll second it.
A motion by Rufus, seconded by Julie, to approve the employment of Lisa Doro as Title I Instruction Aide effective September 6th. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Kim Ness is recommending that Deborah Soria be hired as an ELL paraprofessional to work with students at the high school. I would like to make a motion to approve the employment of Deborah Soria as an ELL paraprofessional at a salary of Step 1 effective
August 29th.
August 29th, 2016.
A motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Rufus, seconded by Julie, to approve the employment of Deborah Soria as an English language learner, a paraprofessional, effective August 29th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Jim Davidson is recommending that Amy, help me, Joe.
Elbow Sizer?
Elbow, but?
Elbow Sizer?
Elbow Sizer.
Common spelling.
Elbow Sizer be hired as a Title I Instructional Aide. Most recently, Amy worked as a lead teacher at Building Blocks formerly known as Stepping Stones. I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment of Amy Elbow Sizer as a Title I Instructional Aide at a salary of Step 1 effective September 6, 2016.
Second.
A motion by Rufus and seconded by Danielle to approve the employment of Amy Elbow Sizer as Title I Instructional Aide effective September 6th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Michelle Rosen is recommending that Amy Elbow Sizer be hired as a part-time early childhood teacher. Amy's instructional aide position is morning hours, so she is able to teach in the afternoon. With increased ECFE enrollment this year, additional teacher, or additional teacher time is needed. Amy holds a bachelor's degree in early childhood education from SDSU. I therefore make a motion to approve the employment of Amy Elbow Sizer as a part-time early childhood teacher at a salary of BA Step 1 effective August 29, 2016.
Second.
A motion by Rufus, seconded by Dell, to approve the employment of Amy Elbow Sizer as a part-time early childhood teacher effective August 29th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you Rufus. That's all the personnel matters. We'll move to board committee reports. And first, Operations Committee meeting of August 18th. Danielle?
Yeah, most of our meeting was covered tonight. We talked about the dance team, went over the budget and what we wanted to do there. We talked about the operating levy referendum, as well as adding Jackson County Central Schools to the boys and girls soccer programs. And then we went over the hockey and soccer agreements again for the next three years. We talked about the adult breakfast increase of 10 cents and looked at the St. Paul Lutheran meal agreement, since that's new. One thing we did talk about at the meeting, a high school vending machine. So this was proposed that we have one in the hallway outside the high school gyms, but it will have more healthy snacks for the students. Kind of so if they need something before practice or after practice, that type of thing there. And then we looked at what our elementary enrollment will be as of that day, which was 891 students.
And when it comes to that vending machine, we didn't need board action on that, did we? Or did we? Were we waiting on more?
We're waiting for some more information.
Yeah, that's right. That's why we don't have board action tonight on that. But no, no ho-hos or twinkies in that one. It would be stuff like beef jerky and granola bars and stuff like this. All right. Okay, thanks Danielle. Southern Plains Board Meeting from yesterday, Julie?
Yes, we met last night. Just some of the normal stuff that we usually do, some hiring, some retirements, some resignations. Couple leave of absences that we had approved. A lane change was approved. An employee work agreement was approved. There was a technology agreement that was approved at Fairmont Area Schools, and I'm assuming that'll come to us after that's been approved there. Approved a staff sharing agreement with Green Island East Chain for Cook because they provide the meal service to the Winnebago site. And then also with Minnesota Valley Educational Co-op for a .3 teacher of the deaf, a hard of hearing. Agreement for services with Minnesota Girls Academy. Also agreement with United Builders of Blue Earth. There's going to be some work done on that Winnebago facility, and so we've approved that. We improved 2016-17, 17-18 master agreement with Southern Plains Educational Co-op, pending ratification by the support personnel that's who negotiations were with. And I'd like to thank Superintendent Brown, who served on that negotiating committee along with Wendy Russenberger, who's another one of our co-op board members that attends. So it was a little extra time on their part. We approved a school resource officer agreement with the city of Winnebago. They provide us school resource. And this year they're going to be having, they have a K-9 unit, so we did agree to have that unit be used within the Winnebago facility. And then we also then approved the annual organizational activities like we a lot of times do as to who's official newspaper and things like that, so. And then also designated the following banks, Bank Midwest and the Minnesota School District Liquid Assuit Funds as to where our monies are being deposited and what we work with for banks. But otherwise, that's all that was really brought up. If you have any other questions? Our next meeting will be Monday, September 26th. And that's, the meetings are always held at the Southern Plains Educational Co-op, just down the street.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Julie? Thank you. And yesterday, we also had an athletic council meeting. That's one of three that they hold during the year. This is mostly the coaches, but also advisors for a few other activities like speech and student council. And went over, Athletic Director Matt Mahoney went over Minnesota State High School League Rules Interpretations Meeting, communicating with parents on different issues. There's a set of guidelines that is gone through. There was some discussion about academic policy when it comes to students who have gotten an F in a spring class that had gone through and made up that they did complete the coursework during the summer, during summer school. But as our policy is right now, they're still ineligible for 10% of the fall season. So there was some discussion about that, about professional development, and a few of the events coming up, like the Hall of Fame. And then Matt Mahoney has been keeping track of this since he's been Athletic Director since 2008, I believe it is. He's been keeping track of this. And he gave us a list that I found very fascinating when it comes to athletes at Fairmont High School. It estimates 1,040 different kids have participated in athletics in that time. Of that, 104 have participated in college athletics. 20 of those have gotten scholarships. 32 out of that 104 played all four years for their school. Most of those at Division III colleges, some Division II and junior college. In that time, we've had three athletes from Fairmont High School have played Division I athletics, one girls cross-country runner, one girls soccer player, and one baseball player. So those of you whose kids think they're going to be playing in the NFL or Major League Baseball or Major League Soccer someday, the numbers are kind of against you. But it is still pretty remarkable that we have, from our town of Fairmont, we have that many kids that are still able to.
With those students that do participate, I mean, with Division I, II, or whatever. I mean, it's quite a commitment on them to get their studies done and to be able to focus on that, which, you know, that's really why they are going to college. But, you know, when you do Division I, Division II, I mean, each level requires more dedication to that sport. And so a lot of times, and when those students do do that, many times they have to even take, you know, a longer educational course because of the time that is committed for that. So, I mean, it does give, I mean, you've got to applaud them for the time and that, that they have committed for that. But it's very difficult. And, you know, many students get to that point. They decide that it's more important to get that degree and get out into the workforce too, but.
There was discussion about that of kids being involved in so many activities, you know, concentrating on one or several or participating in as many as they can. And it's just, it's interesting to see how many really impressive young men and women that we've had come through Fairmont and participate in it. I thought that was a really great list. Joe was there and they had a Booster Club meeting right afterwards too, so. Anything else on that? Lastly, we had the superintendent evaluation, which we did actually back in July. And we held it off last meeting because Joe was at the school board administrators and school administrators conference up in the Twin Cities. So this year, it's the same thing that we do every year. We, as a school board, evaluate Joe annually. And this year, it was a little bit different because there were only five members at the time that were able to give the evaluation. So the numbers were a little bit different, but overall, they indicated outstanding performance that the school board is very happy with the job Superintendent Brown is doing. And I know, you know, I'm sure you'd like to have 5.0s across the board, Joe, but, you know, some of us are a little tough on grading sometimes. I'll admit that I am. But if I can find, I have two copies of this somewhere in my stack of papers here. I could go through some of the numbers, but it's 10 different areas that the board evaluates Joe. And he gives us a list of his goals that he wants to accomplish at the beginning of the year too.
Right, and actually, for this upcoming year, the school board actually has set out eight different goals to focus on for the 16-17 school year. And I just want to make a point, you know, one of the important roles that the school board has across Minnesota is to hire a superintendent and to evaluate him or her throughout the school year. And one nice thing about our school board is that you've consistently done that. And I really do appreciate the feedback that I get. I also just want to say before you even go through that, that I appreciate working with our local school board. When I go to school board conventions and go to superintendent meetings at the state level, I spend a lot of time talking with colleagues from all over the state. And Fairmont Area Schools is just very fortunate that we have the school board members that we have because your heart is in the right direction. You care deeply about our kids and the future of our community. And that's not always the case. You know, in some school boards, in fact, I get the Albert Lee Paper also, one of the newspapers I get, and some of the school board members are suing other school board members right now. And, you know, we just don't have that. We, we all get along. We're all professional. We all act appropriately. And it's just a great board to work with, and so I appreciate that. But you go ahead.
The areas that we evaluate Joe under include providing leadership for the district's educational programs, staff development, and curriculum development to provide the best learning environment for students. Four different areas here. Joe scored between a 3.8 and a 4.8 out of a possible five on those. Number two, informs and advises the board about programs, practices, and problems of the district and keeps the board informed of activities operating under the board's authority. Again, the range was 3.8 to 4.8 as far as providing us and communicating with the public and the media about Fairmont Schools. In Section 3, defines educational needs of the district to the school board, recommending need for new or revised policies and staffing recommendations for board decisions. Scored between a 4.0, but mostly 4.6s and 4.8s in this section. Number four was acts as a liaison between the community and school districts and responds to concerns of parents, students, citizens, and staff to increase understanding of policies and practices to keep them informed and involved with school different, school district activities. Six different questions here. Again, the range was 4.0, but mostly 4.6 and 4.8. Number five was oversees all financial operations of the district, preparing, presenting, and recommending various budgets to the board. A range of 3.8 to 4.4 under that. Number six was interprets employee proposals to the board and recommends adjustments of employee policies and salary structures. Range of 4.2 to 4.6 on six different questions there. Institutes and updates a comprehensive strategic planning process, including short-term and long-term planning, district goals and instructional goals on six different questions there. The range was 4.2 to 4.6. Establishes and maintains good relationships with agencies and personnel outside the district in order to promote our best interests. 4.4, 4.4, 4.4 and 4.6 under those three areas. Number nine was maintains and improves effective board superintendent relations by reviewing and upgrading performance through seminars, training sessions. And I think personally, and I know a few of the other, we've talked about wanting to do a little more self-evaluation with the board. We did do some this year. Our grades were between 4.0 and 4.8 there. And number 10 is ultimately accountable for all aspects of school district operation. And under those, we had a range of 4.2 to 4.75. So overall, shows that our board members were very pleased with Superintendent Brown's performance. Any further additions to that?
You know, the important part of, you know, the superintendent's evaluation and the board's self-evaluation is to, is to look ahead and ask, you know, how we can, how we can continue to improve. You know, we have a, we have a very solid district, both financially and structurally. We're doing a good job with education, but we can do better. we're doing a good job with education, but we can do better. We can always do better. And that's going to require, you know, more effort on the part of each and every one of us, you know, superintendent and each board member, as well as all the staff. And so it, those opportunities to, you know, to ask how we're doing is an important step that needs to be done continually. And, you know, and, and as we hear the, the evaluation of the superintendent, you know, Joe's doing a great job, but we're going to challenge him to do better, and we're going to challenge ourselves to do better, and we're going to challenge the, the staff and the kids to do better. And, because we still have, you know, we still have some gaps in our, in the work that we do. But I'm very optimistic that, and I'm, I'm welcome Dell to, to join the team.
Thank you. Well, I think if, if you all think, you know, just thinking, you know, of myself, but you know, if you think that, you know, we've, we've got to the top and we have nowhere else to go, then, then where's our work, you know, to lead us to? And so, yes, we gotta, we know we're doing a great job in that, but I agree with you, Rufus, we just, we continue to work hard, like I said, and we all work together as a team, we work to provide the best for our students, you know, make this school a top 20 school, as well as, as a community and everything else. We just need to keep working hard together, provide the best for our kids, and that's, you know, that's where our heart is at, is in, you know, our kids, because they are our future, and they're going to be our leaders someday, when, when we're going to need it. So we need to provide for them to, to also help ourselves in the end, so.
I, I feel it's kind of like growing a garden. You've always got, we plant the seeds, there's a lot of work to do, you always have to pull a few weeds, you always have to be there to water, you always have to be there to feed the plants. But it's, it's really helpful when you have someone who has a green thumb that knows what they're doing. So that's kind of the way I feel. We're always going to have those, those things that we have to do to keep working. And, you know, sometimes, some, some might happen and stuff doesn't work out the best, but, you know, we, we, we always fix those problems and we move ahead and we, and we make progress, and that's, that's, I think, the, the goal and why we do it. So I think it's been a, a good year, and we look forward to an even better one here in the year to come. Anything else? Any more business to come before the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
A motion by Julie, seconded by Rufus, to approve adjourning our meeting at 6:11 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.